I know normally they keep on there.
Didn't recognize it, but it was an add-on. I got guys out in my car if you need to. I can drop off later. Two and a half hours. Yeah, once they just came out. Three and a half hour play, aren't they?
Well, it's now seven o'clock, we're hoping to speeding up. Please stand, remove your caps gentlemen, and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda as printed in that? If everybody's received their copy? Do you want to entertain a motion for action on this?
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes early up.
Second.
Agenda.
We have, we have a motion properly supported to accept the agenda as written. Other discussion? Calling for the order, for the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same size, sign. Okay, passed unanimously. Okay, next, we have the minutes of our last meeting, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting. Again, I'm assuming everybody received them in your packet.
Motion to accept the minutes from March eleventh as written.
I'll second.
We have a motion properly supported, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, public comment, at this time, if there's anything that uh needs to be brought to our attention that's not on the agenda, I think Dale passed the agendas around. Yes, Bill?
Uh, mine's an easy one, update on the migrant housing ordinance, where does it stand?
Okay, Kevin?
Uh, it's all through the planning commission, I'll make sure with Dale, make sure he gets it.
Okay, I, cause we haven't seen it on our bills before. I will double check.
Next order of business, we have a public hearing for the Boyd rezoning request, twenty-seven eighty-seven thirteen mile road. Is there someone from the family who would like to say something before we open up the proceed with the hearing?
Not at this time.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, alright, we'll open up for public comment, if you have something to say when you call upon, please step to the podium, state your name and your address for our records and uh we'll start over Dale, if you have anything. Bill?
Nope.
Okay, uh, the public comment, so then we'll close the public portion and discuss it. Uh, Kevin has provided us with the uh memorandum, uh kind of laying it all out and uh going through the items that uh we need to address. Kevin, do you have any comments?
Just a general overview, the Boyd's are requesting that their property at two seven eight seven fifteen mile is rezoned from the Act Two district to Act One district. Uh, based on our findings, we would recommend, let's say that all standard seven.
Opposite, opposite Kevin.
The other way around.
Other way around, from one to two.
Yeah.
You said from two to one.
Yeah, rezoned from two to one, uh, yeah, sorry.
One to two. Speak clearly.
From Act One to Act Two. I did. Uh, so from Act One to Act Two, uh, based on our review of the request, it appears that all of these things that I met, we would recommend approval. Recommend, recommending.
I just have one question, and there you mentioned that you're gonna do some farming on that then too? It's large enough to will, to do some farming.
Yeah, yes, yeah, that's the plan, my parents own the property right here on fifteen mile and.
Okay, please, please state your name and correct.
Oh, sorry, I'm Abby and then Abby Boyd, I don't live in Sparta currently, but we have the property at two seven eight seven.
Okay.
Um, they own property on fifteen mile and we grew up farming and having cattle and stuff, so then this would just be are a place that we could have a house and then um yeah, be able to farm the rest of it is essentially the goal, so.
Okay. For your personal use.
Correct, yeah, yes, yep.
Anybody else have any questions? Kevin did a real thorough job on it.
I, I have one that, it shows that there you're gonna build your home quite a ways back off the, off the street, do you need a private road? Mentioned a look at that or no?
I'm not sure, we haven't spoken to them yet, this was like the first part of it. Um, when we spoke to the road commission previously, they said that it wouldn't be an issue, but nothing is like in writing.
No, it would be Sparta private road commission, right?
Oh, um, yeah, I don't know.
Be just private, I think it's always serving one dwelling.
Oh.
It's a, it's a private home, so they don't need a private.
Alright.
Okay, yeah, if that's something we had to do, we have to.
I know, it did look way, quite a ways back.
Okay, yeah, it is, it is off the road, but.
It's just gonna be a long drive, like.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Anything else?
All good for me.
Anything?
Good.
As you say, I think Kevin did a really good job in writing it out, so. Alright, I guess uh move the rest of the hearing and make our recommendation. Here's the beginning, provide us with a motion.
Make a motion for.
Yeah, there's a draft motion that the planning commission would like to view, so uh, the motion as drafted is the motion to recommend approval of the requested rezoning from Abigail and Todd Boyd.
Right.
Reson their property at two seven eight seven thirteen mile. Parcel four one dash zero five dash one six dash four zero zero dash zero one zero. From the prime agricultural preservation zoning district to the agricultural zoning district, per the findings in fact contained within Fresh Coast Planning Memo dated March three first two thousand twenty-five, and the planning commission's findings are the same.
He said I'll make that motion. I'll second.
So we have a motion properly supported, any other discussion? Hearing none, a call for the motion, all, vocal?
Vocal. Anderson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Flannery?
Yes.
Humphries?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
And Hartman?
Yes.
Manamas.
Okay, Manamas, okay, very good.
Congratulations.
You've got it all set now, and proceed to the next step.
Yes, see people on Thursday.
Okay, very good. Alright, uh next uh agenda items, review the requirements for all dwellings and accessory buildings regulations. And again, I commend uh Kevin on putting this together, it's, it start, those numbers start juggling around. So with that, Kevin, did you uh kind of lead us through this or?
Yeah, so I think uh between what the planning commission saw last month and this month, most of the languages remain the same. I know the planning commission had um preferred that lot coverage presented, just for calculating, uh, as you see in the memo, uh, the one issue that's the road kind of dug a little bit deeper is that you know, for different lot areas last week, or last month, as we presented, we presented different lot coverage percentages. And that resulted in uh not necessarily orderly size increase of accessory buildings, so right now, or what was previously viewed was that one acre or less would have seven percent, two acres or less would have four percent. When we dug into that in a little more detail, what we're seeing is that, well, in that case, you know, point nine acre lot would be able to have more accessory building square footage than a two acre lot. So that's what we, the main update that we've made with the accessory buildings since you've seen it last, is that for five acres and less, five acres or less, recommending that it's just a square footage. And then for greater than five acres, uh, two percent lot coverage, just to make sure that there's a in that case, all property owners get a little bit more square footage, and then it allows for the orders, orderly kind of growth, so, yeah, one acre, two acres gets more square footage and so on and so forth. Um, so I think that those are the, the feedback I'm looking for tonight. It's kind of a viewing from the planning commission on the proposed number of buildings and accessory building size. Um, and I know we also received some comments from Trustee Goodbello, um, that once we're ready, we can kind of go through those, and then I'd like to get the planning commission's directions on how to address those.
Do we have a chance to, to look at those and read the numbers? Question to Kevin?
Mr. Chairman? Can I ask Kevin a question, or do you want the public to speak for question first?
Oh, we'll go to the public.
Bill Brown, four five five seven ten mile road, Sparta. Um, the research that I turned in to Ken when I wasn't here last month, is I did research on all your surrounding townships. And you ended up with seven percent. And I've got Chester, Tyrone, and Solon are all at thirty percent of your lot coverage. And that's where we were going with this, when we went to the percentages. Somehow you're all the way down, almost smaller than what we have now. That was the research I did, but I wasn't here, cause I was on vacation last month. And that was what Ken tried to turn in. And that's just buy your lot, because if you're not over that five acres, they consider it, or now, you're trying to rezone down to two and a half. But there's some lots out there that are even smaller than that, and theirs don't even matter what lot size you have. It is just a flat out thirty percent. And then I showed, Ken showed me the chart, and the highest number on there is seven percent. So if you want to preserve farmland, that's what we're trying to do, is let people be able to build buildings or combine them or whatever, so they're big enough to at least park a full-size bucket. So that's where I did the research and came up with all these other townships around you. And I had five of them I turned in, them are the only three I can remember tonight, cause I thought that was the numbers Ken turned in last month. So that was the findings I found on the public website. Plus, I know the board member in Chester. So that's just why I'm a little confused on how the highest one you got is seven percent. That's right down to like you say, unless you're super small, you go by the footage. That's why we started this whole process, was to get it larger and more accessible, and that would help with your barn dominiums and everything. Because then they could get their barns and everything big enough for what they want. That's why I did the research through the other townships.
Kevin? Want to respond at all or?
So the lot coverage percentages came from what Sparta already has, based on the planning commission's direction. Trying to increase what you already have, so right now it's already set, just based on square footage, if you got this size of lot, it's much square footage. So that's where seven percent came in for that one acre lot, again, what's reported tonight does not have those percentages. Right now, we've tried to adjust your zoning ordinance so that can stays consistent with what you already have, but also allowing for further growth, based on the feedback that I got from the planning commission at last month's meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I've just, I've just wanted to kind of comment on what Bill had mentioned. I think our last meeting, if we look at the minutes, what we did is, I think we asked the open question, I think Kevin was familiar maybe with Tyrone Township, I think he mentioned, but wasn't familiar necessarily with Alpine or Chester Township. Was there something to do with the zoning of the property based on that? Because I know I remember to his point that Tyrone Township, I think, was twenty-five percent.
See, Tyrone Township is definitely different, Tyrone does not have a lot coverage percentage.
Okay.
Tyrone Township, they have uh, for their accessory buildings, so they have their Ag district and their Rural agricultural district. They do not regulate the number of buildings or the size of buildings within those two districts. But for their other districts, they do, specifically for residential, they have accessory building size limits and numbers. So they, they treat those two districts differently.
That makes sense, cause that's kind of the question that was asked, what in your absence? Cause you had brought that information to me, and then I brought that to Kevin, and then he kind of clarified that, that it was based on a little bit on the zoning was different for that percentage, is that right?
Correct, so that was Tyrone, again, every community, accessory buildings are regulated differently in every community. So that's where I'm trying to work with the planning commission to make sure that you guys have the rules in place that you want.
Sure.
You mentioned in your write-up here, there's quite a few lots under, under an acre.
Yeah, they do have full lots under the township, so, you know, right now, the minimum lot size would be an acre, but there are legally non-conforming lots throughout the township that are smaller than an acre. I don't know how many, I know there are a good number, but I don't know how many, I had to work to do an audit and say there's two hundred lots out of that. Um, but what we did look at for this review is that, okay, if we use that seven percent lot coverage, when we reviewed it last week, we reviewed it in full acres, so you know, if you had one full acre, and you had seven percent lot coverage, you'd be able to have three thousand forty acres, which is more than what's currently allowed. However, if it was down in size, that's where you start to see lots less than an acre, and you would see a reduction, and quite a drastic reduction for some of those lots. So that's one of the reasons we recommended moving away from that, so we, we looked at it from two different angles, because obviously the percentages that we had before would cause an issue for lots less than an acre. Um, but then also as we moved forward, we had different lot coverages, percentages for one, two, three, four, five acres. And that was one of the issues that also happened, was that, alright, well, now I've got a point nine acre lot, and I don't know the numbers off my head, so I'm kind of making some up, that I can have a two thousand square foot building. Um, but then, now that I've got a one point one, you'd run into issues where a smaller lot would be allowed to have a larger accessory building. So we tried two different percentages, um, we got it down to like twelve percent. And that, that would have allowed everybody in every district to get more, but then you get to some of those larger lots, and all of a sudden, you know, a five acre lot, it's, you know, right, I might only be able to have four thousand square foot, and then at twelve percent lot coverage, you're talking twenty thousand. Doing the opposite, applying just a base, two percent lot coverage to everybody, then you'd see a lot of lots seeing a huge reduction, or a significant reduction in what they already have. So that's where we've come up with the term proposal of, okay, to kind of keep consistent with what you already have for lots under five acres, it would have a set square footage, and that would be an increase from what's already allowed. And then for lots over five acres, is a, a two percent, so then it becomes more based on the size of your lot.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, if I, I don't want to clarify, but one thing I think Bill was talking about was total lot coverage, is this percentage says accessory building, is that sort of the seven percent?
Yeah, and that's gonna be another.
It's not the total, like, like, it's not, it doesn't take into account your house, right?
Correct, and that's where we're gonna see a difference.
See, that's, that's the uh.
Numbers that.
Correct, for Vanna, with their maximum lot coverage.
Right, that's what's different.
They talked about it with every district, so for like, for Vanna, they do it by lot coverage, and let's say in the we just updated it, so, um, they've changed it recently, but in this district, you get thirty percent lot coverage, that includes all buildings. If we were to do that in Sparta, that would be a much, much larger overhaul of your zoning ordinance. So with this lot coverage percentage that's proposed to the planning commission tonight, that's only for accessory buildings, your house or other principal buildings aren't calculated in the lot coverage calculation.
Kevin, is this kind of like, cause I know we went off to a lot of different subjects last, about the barn dominiums and the attached, this, this is for sake of our existing accessory building that's not attached to the residence, right?
You know, this is where one of the updates has been made, so right now the zoning ordinance is written that it's, if it's attached, it's a garage, and if it's detached, it's, it's an accessory building or a shed.
Okay.
So one of the updates in the language tonight is, if this is what the township moves forward, that distinction goes away, it's just whether it's attached or detached, it's considered an accessory building. So that's where the change would be also, is right now, a garage can be a maximum of twelve hundred square foot, so if it's attached, maximum of twelve hundred square foot. If it's detached, then you have your accessory building and shed, and that's based on the size of your, your slot, so I think on a one acre lot, I remember correctly, it's a twelve hundred square foot pole barn, and then you could have like a hundred twenty square foot shed.
Yeah.
Based on the planning commission's direction, what we've done is saying, okay, you can still only have three accessory buildings on a one acre lot, but you've just got a blanket three thousand square foot or whatever it is, so if you want to build a barn dominium with an attached three thousand square foot garage or pole barn, wherever you call it, you can do that. If you want to build a one thousand square foot garage and a two thousand square foot pole barn, you can do that, you, you have that flexibility that you want to have necessarily under the current zoning ordinance.
Thanks for explaining that, because I was a little confused, so.
And that is the main difference. Cause, cause the other one said it was just coverage of the lot.
Total lot.
And that's why I totaled up every square footage of every building I had, because we're talking about combining them all, instead of having three little barns. You build a barn dominium and you put this big old wing on it, and then you're still under the square footage of the lot. Or you put three little chicken barns out there or whatever. And Chen and I and everyone else kind of agreed it'd be cleaner looking to have your one larger building instead of little sheds everywhere.
So. The thing to remember though, right, make sure I understand it correctly, is the primary residence or building is not covered in this square footage.
Right.
I didn't come into the calculation.
And to your point, really different than.
Than everyone else, so that's where somehow we gotta do math and all to figure out all the different footages now. So it's, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got a Kevin question. So what was our square footage you could have in for a garage? Just attached garage?
Yeah, maximum, so right now the garage is your garden.
Twelve hundred square foot?
Size, yeah, maximum is twelve hundred square foot for a garage.
So because the thing I'm looking at, right, is if we go down the current allowable, if we could allow twelve hundred square foot for a garage, plus our accessory buildings? Wouldn't that be a total of thirty-seven twenty, and the proposed is down three thousand forty-nine? Cause now you're saying they're considered the same? Where did you add, or is this number of current square footage, is that garage and accessory building?
Yeah, that's garage and accessory building, so that's.
So on this, literally right now, if you had a twelve hundred square foot garage, we could only have accessory buildings up to thirteen hundred and twenty square feet.
Yeah, so yeah, that's what we'll see on table two is, um, on a one acre lot or less, you could have a twelve hundred square foot garage, twelve hundred square foot pole barn, and a hundred twenty square foot shed. So that's, that two thousand five hundred twenty is like the, the combined maximum.
Okay.
I just didn't want to see us going backwards.
So with a five acre lot, what size, um?
Please state your name, so.
Oh, I think the, one, two acres. West Northland Drive in New Angle. So with a five acre lot, what size is, can you build, is the, it's seven percent of five acres?
What's being proposed is greater than four acres, but not greater than fifteen, is two percent of the lot coverage.
So two percent of, of the five acre in square footage?
Right.
Ten thousand eight hundred.
So five acres is two hundred seventeen thousand square feet, it's two percent of that. Which is four thousand three hundred fifty-six square feet, am I doing that correctly?
I don't know. Four, three, five, six, seven. Four thousand three hundred fifty-six square.
Yeah, that is just the garage portion.
No, that's the just, that's any accessory building.
Right, but in my specific case, I'm doing the barn dominium, the house square footage is not included in that.
That is.
And how do you distinguish the house square footage from the barn square footage?
Doesn't apply.
Well, it's a building code that probably defines it.
Dwelling.
It's a building.
Right, so I'm doing a barn dominium all in one.
I'm gonna.
How do you distinguish what's the barn and what's the house?
There's a fire wall, and the firewall and the, the.
If it's attached.
And, and all that, that defines.
You don't live out my garage.
You got, you got to talk one at a time, it's gonna screw up the speaker.
I would prefer to cut uh Kevin.
So how, how do you distinguish the house square footage from?
There's gonna be a separation wall between the living space and the actual garage, so there's gonna be a firewall.
What if the living space is the second story and the garage is the first story?
Okay, here's the deal.
Just, no, here's, here's the deal. I'm just gonna, no, here, can you give me a chance to talk? Yes, yeah, yeah.
This isn't the place to solve those issues, we're talking about an ordinance here, so that would be kind of a specific question with the building inspector and Kevin outside of here, not for this board to.
Alright, that's fine, yeah. And I'm not trying to make an issue, I'm just asking.
That's okay.
A question for it, so. Oh, sounds good, thanks.
Kevin, do you want to comment on that or? It's time.
If the planning commission asks questions, I'm happy to.
Okay.
To respond to your questions, so yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Anybody else have any questions?
No, I think like you already alluded to, it's just uh, under the non-conforming lots, I was, I'm glad that you did the example of the previous chart versus the proposed chart, showing, cause we had kind of, were a little uh apprehensive last meeting of just moving forward with this, and I think in your examples, like you credit, that you showed where there potentially was some pitfalls in the thing, so. As we work through those potentially tonight, I mean, probably would want to address those shortcomings, if that's a way to look at it. What do you, how do you feel, Mr. Chairman? Like the non-conforming lots was one that came right out to me.
Right.
And, and to Kevin's credit, the, the amount potentially of those, it, it may make a huge impact of what we potentially do with that, based on that.
So you're saying if we left the non-conforming, if we dealt with those separately?
Yeah, well, I think the other thing too, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I, Bill took some time and actually went through there, and he had some suggestions, I don't pretend to gather all of them right now, but maybe.
I think Kevin has some of them.
Do you have those, like, maybe I should?
Yeah, so I think that was, I'm happy to go through those now.
Yeah.
And we can look at the, the size of the buildings also. So there were a couple of comments, um, one of them on the definition for dwelling our apartment. There's a part of that definition that says every dwelling shall have a minimum width at least twenty-two feet for its entire length. So the way that that's been interpreted in Sparta is, the question was, well, what about the length requirement? So the way that's been interpreted in Sparta is that the length is the longer measurement, so it's twenty-two foot of wide on one side, and if then it's only twenty foot wide on the other side, well then it's twenty-two foot long, and the width doesn't meet the requirement, so in effect, it has to be twenty-two foot wide on both sides. I didn't look at that particularly when we were going through the zoning ordinance, or for this particular amendment, but that is something we could update also. I do work with some communities where it just says, you know, twenty-two foot wide on all sides. So that's something the planning commission wanted to look at, of just cleaning up some of that language, we can do that.
And the reason for that was to avoid single wides?
I think it's, yeah, just to create, just minimum dwelling requirements, you know, as the township looks at aesthetics, that's something to control, is to to make sure that character the communities, you know, that's why you're allowed to don't over double groups. That's just an aesthetic requirement, that width is there on all sides, so. I guess that's where I'd ask the planning commission first, is, do you want to change some of that language, so it's more Puerto Rican states, twenty-two foot wide on all sides? Just leave it as it is. Just leave it as it is.
I I like the idea of having a. Having that minimum in there. I think that covers us.
Do you think it's enough just to have the twenty foot wide?
Well, that's a minimum.
Or do you think Kevin's suggestion about having twenty two foot on all sides minimum?
I think twenty two minimum.
I like.
I think is a wise additive to it.
I like I like that. It's a little more clearly defined than.
On all sides, that just, it makes it clear that that's that's a starting point. That's a minimum.
Mr. Goodfellow, you had something to say.
Isn't there a minimum square footage for a house?
There is a minimum square footage required.
So it can't be twenty two by twenty two, I don't think.
What is the minimum square footage?
It is, so it's part of the way it's written is it's a minimal of seven hundred twenty square feet. However, if only seven hundred twenty square feet has to be positioned. So that an addition could be placed on the house in the future to bring it to nine hundred sixty square feet. So. Seven twenty is the minimum, but nine sixty is also kind of minimum. Cause you you have to be able to build at least nine hundred sixty square foot.
But why? You gotta be fifty feet long.
Yeah.
Not necessarily if it's.
That's the minimum.
If you're, well, you're saying it has to be positioned so that you could add on. Great example is our home.
Yep.
Our home is very, it's it's was that minimum when it was built by my parents. And it could be added on off the back. It can't be added on the sides because of our lot lines. So.
I think the the reason why I was thinking that would be nice to have that just clearly is then you wouldn't get an argument about length and width and which one's which.
Yeah.
If you clearly define it as all sides have to be a minimum of twenty two, you still have the square footage you have to deal with, but then. You don't get into uh like backyard, side yard, front yard.
Right.
And get into that argument. This is a little clear to me that no matter what side it is, it has to be a minimum of twenty two.
Wouldn't we just say that no side can be less than?
That's another way of saying it. Yeah, that's another way of saying it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think it'll have to be.
I think you create another problem by doing that. Otherwise, which one do you have to buy back? It's not working right. Working on this one?
So I like the no side can be less than. I'll work, I'll look at no side less than and all side less than, make sure it's consistent with the ordinance. So that's, you know, one thing, you know, the planning commission, so whenever somebody would submit a zoning permit for a dwelling. There's a list of different requirements throughout the zoning ordinance that. Twenty two, twenty two five foot wide on all sides, meet the minimum square footage requirements. It doesn't have a double pitch roof, doesn't have the uh overhang, minimum overhang mat. If there's a garage, it's that, we garage requirement. So I'll go through all of the requirements. That twenty two foot width is just a minimum. So I'm gonna be happy thirty by forty, as long as that minimum width met. From there.
And you could put in there, it has to be kinda like with the with the tile field, you have to have a reserve area. So if you wanna build something less than twenty two. Well, you you're to get down to your, what was your minimum size?
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty.
So even at that seven hundred twenty, they would still have to be, today would have to be twenty two foot wide on all sides. They would just have to be able to. Put on a hundred forty square foot addition to go to do that in the future.
So okay, work on that and bring that back to us then or?
Yeah, I'll update that definition. So.
Yes.
Or uh so. Um section one five four point two five two A, there was a question. So clearly reads in any zoning district, an accessory building or what's proposed is any zoning district accessory building may be erected detached from the principal building. Or as an integral part of the permitted principal building. When erected as an integral part of the permitted permitted principal building, it shall comply in all respects with the requirements and so on or applicable. To the permitted principal building. And the question was, well, what if the what if the accessory building isn't built at the same time as the principal building? In that case, so somebody today, you know, there's some older houses that didn't have attached garages. So if that. The addition comes on in the future, typically what I'm looking at in terms of the requirements for a permitted principal building are gonna be the setbacks. So if it's attached. Um it would still have to be all the required setbacks of a permitted principal building and not necessarily accessory building. So you could have some greater setbacks for rear yard, front yard. If it's attached. Um and that doesn't matter if it's built at the same time as the house or if it's built as an addition later. Um so I don't know that there's any requirement that would have to change that language. The other question came on uh setbacks portion. Um so an attached accessory building may be. May extend fifteen feet closer to the front lot line than the closest wall of the principal building to the front lot line. Provided that no portion of the accessory building lies within the required front yard. That subsection there with the intent there. So right now, as the zoning ordinance currently exists, it's attached, it's a garage. So when I have reviewed a a house with an attached garage, the way that I've interpreted the zoning ordinance is that, you know, if the garage is. You know, maybe you got a little L shaped house and I'm not using the dwelling portion of the house to establish the the front. Lot line. I'm saying, okay, that's fine. That's that meets the intent of the zoning ordinance. However, as we've talked about accessory buildings and now allowing for attached pole barns. There's awful language in there that says a detached accessory building cannot be closer to the house. Yeah, can't be closer to the road than the house. So trying to capture that intent is that, again, a part of that aesthetics is like. When you have a single family dwelling, the township wants the dwelling to be the main focal point. So when we talk about barn dominiums and now that really changes what it could look like. So if I think about a barn dominium, you could have, if you switched it, you didn't have that language about an attached um. Attached accessory building closer to the road than the house, is you could essentially turn that around and. The aesthetic view would be, okay, instead of seeing a dwelling, you're seeing two big overhead doors in the garage. So that's something we can keep or remove. Um but that would be the intent there is that specifically for barn dominiums, you're still getting. The dwelling is still a main focal focal point for that that use.
Is there a question that we should be asking our building inspector as far as this gentleman's issue is, you know? Where does the house begin in the barn? Or where does the house end that the barn begins? Or is that pretty clear?
Clearly stated in the in the building code. It's clearly stated, there's gotta be a fire separation between dwelling space.
Right.
And storage space. So if he's putting, if he is putting living space above his garage, then that's gotta be a rated ceiling in the garage. So I mean, it's it's very clearly stated in the building code.
Bill, did you have another question?
Just just a comment, you're um the way it's written today, it states that the accessory building, if it's your garage. And you make it huge, that accessory building can be fifteen feet closer to the road than your house.
If attached.
If it's attached.
Mm-hmm.
And it's gonna be a lot bigger than the house. I just wanted to make sure that's, cause that's the way it reads, I think, Kevin Ray.
Not necessarily, it's a lot. If we look at, let's say, a barn dominium in particular. Right now, there there's another question we'll get to later, is one of the changes that the planning commission's proposed is. Currently, an accessory building can only have sidewall heights of sixteen foot or taller. So one of the changes. Would allow for an attached garage to have the same as the other two story dwelling, then your your. Your attached garage could also be two stories tall. However, if you have a single story, the way, and that's something we'll address in a second. Your garage would still only be sixteen foot tall. So. In that case, that attached garage may be taller than a one story house, but it would only be allowed fifteen foot closer. You guys could, you could remove that, you could say it's bad.
It can't.
That's where I wanna get some people, that it can't be closer. And then if it's attached garage, then. You're just, that's gonna be one of the changes that to, the way it would impact is if somebody does have like a house, a house. That would no longer be a feasible layout within Sparta. That's also, you know, again, with that fifteen foot, that's up for discussion. I don't know if that's. When I think about it, you have a home, maybe you've got the house, and then perhaps comes here, you got a two story garage and you drive up. I don't know that would fit in the court where it's called, large enough to allow that. So that's where I need to keep that, keep that from the planning commission is is all you can say, can't be closer to the road than the house. You can say fifteen, twenty five feet. Really, just whatever you guys.
As long as it's attached, you're you're talking.
Yep, that would be, yeah. And if it's detached, the rule would remain the same. And it can be closer to the road than the house unless it's at least three hundred feet from the road.
And if you want to see a great example of that being built right now, um Phil Suckup's wife is putting a garage ridge in front of her house, attached.
Mm-hmm. Where's that at?
Ten miles in between Peach Ridge and Fruit Ridge. It's it's in the townships.
That's what I'm saying.
It is in the township.
Is it more than fifteen feet?
Pardon?
Yeah.
More than fifteen feet?
Oh, yeah. I I shouldn't say that, I don't know. It looks like it might be, but. It's very nice.
What's the?
I don't know particular, it's quite possible. Again, with the current zoning ordinance is certainly proposed. Putting a garage closer to the road and it's attached.
Yeah, it probably, I'm sure they got a permit cause it's quite visible and contractors doing it and.
Right, I'm just saying.
It just looks nice.
Okay.
So you'll have something for us next?
I I need direction from the planning.
Well, you definitely wouldn't be able to, in a fifteen foot extension, you definitely wouldn't be able to put the door on a fifteen foot side if you're having a double garage. A single garage, cause on a double, there's some rate. Cause you're gonna have at least eighteen inches on both sides of it and then probably a sixteen foot door for a double. So that puts you at nineteen.
So you're looking for whether or not it can be fifteen feet or twenty five feet closer?
Or whether you guys don't care at all, as long as it's attached. That's the way that how we treat the zoning ordinance today is if it's attached, then it's just considered the part of the principal building and whether it's in front or.
As long as it's out of the setback, we're good.
Yep.
Is where we would look at it now.
Does it matter?
Why?
I don't know.
I don't know why we would con.
I can't, I can't make sure.
I don't know why we would restrict it if it was attached. I can't see any reason why. I mean, so. Consentious?
Yeah, I don't.
And to your point, just to clarify, so Kevin, the detached building um can't be in front of a house.
Correct.
At all, not even one foot, right?
No.
Without a variance and, cause I had to do that for me. Twenty years ago. Anyway, short story, okay, I get that. I think that his example is interesting that. You can build this really nice barn dominium like I'm sure this gentleman would like to do and then the focal point is two huge twelve by sixteen doors. You know, is that gonna be okay? Maybe it is. I don't know. If it actually held that way and actually so the detached or attached, but they would be.
So the main focus would be, yeah, the main focus would be the home.
In front, yeah. As long as it was fifteen feet or more from the road, right?
Uh.
For.
There's a, there's a reasonable example of that, it's Kurnach.
Yeah, Doug Kurnatch. Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking, yeah.
No, that's not.
There's two in Casanova Township that Dale and I both, I mean, my my farm's up there too and and they're right there. And so it kinda gives you a visual. You can really see.
Is it L shape?
Yeah, well, it definitely has one side in front of the other and.
Okay.
And to your point, the the garage is, the the garage part of the dwelling is just as big or bigger than.
Taller.
But what's your main focus when you look at it?
Yeah, and I think that was his point when he brought that up.
Garage ends up being the main focus because it's straight up.
Yeah, the garage is in the front toward M thirty seven, forty six. So that is in front, you know.
The front angle, the front entry to the main residence is there also.
Correct.
But the the actual accessory building in this case is a taller structure than.
Correct.
You're talking about by any chance that one that's on Appleit, well, just before.
Yeah.
I know exactly which one you're talking about.
It's Doug Doug and Carla Kurnats.
Yeah, I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah, so that's a really good example, cause it's very visual.
Mm-hmm.
Kinda, just to Kevin's point, it gives you the example of the garage is in the front, it's at an angle, but it's.
It looks good.
It looks good cause it's at an angle, I think. If it was straight across, I think it'd be uglier than a dog's ear. But being angled like it is.
It looks good and that's. And maybe that's. Yeah.
I think it flows better.
Yeah, and I, to your point, I think it looks nice too. So I don't know that there could be an example where that would be a problem. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, if the if the planning commission is not concerned with that, we can just remove that subsection and then. If you wanna have a barn dominium with the house in the back and the garage in the front, I would just look at the. Fifty foot setback and as long as that garage is at least fifty foot, use the required setback, it would be approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can can I ask Bill a question? Because at some point, it's gonna be our recommendation to the township board and Rob, you can weigh in on this. I mean. Do you guys have any feelings about this? Cause you don't want us to do this rough draft of something that you go like, that's not what we want.
That's not a bad.
Yeah, don't send it back.
Well, this information ahead of time for reasons.
Yeah. And you did, to your point, but I don't know if you actually addressed that part of it.
That that was one of my questions I had.
Yeah, that's where this came from, I think, was basically from both.
Okay, no.
I personally don't, it doesn't matter to me. I it was just the way it was written. I thought, okay. It it doesn't matter. I would, I would throw it out, just get rid of it. Cause there is a section in the back that does say you can put your attached building in front of your house.
Attached.
No, excuse me, accessory building in front of your house as long as you're three hundred feet out the road.
Yes, you're right, it does.
But there's, would, to me is okay too. I mean, you're way back. This one, it doesn't matter to me as long as you're within the. Uh the requirements of a house or accessory building from the road right away. I don't think it matters.
And it being attached, it's gonna all look.
You figure out, no?
What are you on?
Sorry. I hope you can, we got rid of it.
We wanna just have Kevin get rid of that then, as far as?
We might recommend, I mean, I think that that's kind of as a group, that's kind of where we're.
Tim, you in agreement after that?
Yes.
Okay, so eliminate that.
Uh the other question would have been on height. Uh so the way it's written right now, um. So the way it's written currently in the zoning ordinance is whether it's. An accessory building can have sixteen foot sidewall heights. One of the conversations we have specific to to barn dominiums is that if it's attached, it could be larger. Um, Justin Goodfellow brought up a good point, but what if it is a single family home? The way that we have it written right now is then your garage, let's say your your single family home's ten foot tall sidewalls. Well, now your garage can only have ten foot sidewalls. If you still wanna allow for a larger garage height, we can easily remedy that by saying. Uh something along the lines of, you know, if it's attached, it can either be a maximum of the sidewall height of the dwelling. Or sixteen feet, whichever is greater. So that way, even if you have a single family story home, you need to be able to build a sixteen foot tall garage. So we can make that change. Or the planning commission township could just say, well, if you got a single family home, you don't want larger garages than houses. I just need some direction from the planning commission. Do you wanna allow for a sixteen foot tall garage on the house?
I don't see a problem if if the garage, especially if they're trying to put a motorhome or something in there. The sidewalls are gonna have to be sixteen. If it's attached, you know, it should apply, in my opinion.
I think that.
The same as as the accessory building.
Yeah, I don't see, personally, I don't see like.
I don't see an issue with that.
No. What do you think, Tim?
I'm just uh, but then the question, based on what he just asked about having some living space above there, then. If there is living space above the garage, then do we go to the minimum wall requirements or maximum wall requirements of a dwelling again? Like a two story house.
Right. And that's definitely a potential, um. If you built your garage, I honestly, I'm not sure how we would address that if somebody had. If you built your garage, I honestly, I'm not sure how we would address that if somebody had, maybe building a barn dominium. I got my garage, I've got my dwelling on top.
Well, like a partial dwelling, like a mother-in-law's, my mother-in-law not living that close.
You're still gonna have to abide by the building code.
Yeah.
And the, and the firewalls.
Mm-hmm. But now the heights requirement goes from living space from accessory building, right? Cause now it's living space above the accessory building, the way it's written, no.
That would be one. Kind of thinking out loud, the way it's written, somebody came in, they had. Dwelling seven hundred twenty square foot, well, probably nine hundred sixty foot because of the second floor, nine hundred sixty square foot dwelling. And then you got a garage underneath and maybe that continues it down.
I'm saying you got like a twenty-five hundred square foot barn dominium, living space.
Hmm.
With a twelve, eighteen hundred square foot garage attached, the barn dominium's two stories. And they want to continue with living space above that garage, that's who I'm talking about. Oh, so then I'm thinking, wouldn't it go back to heights, the height of a living space?
Yes, yeah, that's the way I would interpret it, I'm interpreting your intent, because, yeah.
Somebody got short, they got eight-foot bearing on their house and then their garage is twelve, twelve square foot.
So I'll make that change, so it's sixteen foot out of the height of the house, whatever. Trusty Goodfellow, so we talked about Matt, next was our footage and number of accessory buildings. Um, we specifically address, uh, accessory buildings for, for a farm and that they're exempt from the number and size. Uh, but we don't address that in height, so we recommend adding the same exemption for height, so if it's a farm building. Still has to meet the maximum thirty-five foot tall for the township, but that sidewall height wouldn't be a requirement. I'll make sure that that matches the intent of the planning commission.
Anything else that we need to have Kevin look at, we can this thing?
Those were all the comments from, uh, Trusty Goodfellow, so I think the last few sense he can guide it on is, uh, proposed. Maximum number of accessory buildings and, uh, proposed maximum square footage. So I think Trusty Goodfellow may have got some comments on that also. Right now, with the, the draft amendment before the planning commission, it's one acre less an area. The proposal would be maximum number, three buildings, with maximum combined square footage of twenty-eight. And, uh, one to two acres, three buildings, three thousand square foot. Two to three, three buildings, three thousand two hundred fifty square foot. And then three to four acres, three buildings, three thousand five hundred square foot. And then greater than four acres, you can have four buildings, two percent of lot area. And then greater than fifteen, five buildings and two percent of lot area.
What are you in agreement on that?
Do that, yeah. Mr. Goodfellow?
Yeah, I'll get up here this thing. It's easier. Uh, of course, my rec, Bill Goodfellow, two-two-six-seven, come on. Of course, my recommendations were larger, cause I look at this, it's like, you're right, in some cases, it's a waste of land. Why have somebody buy some more property for another building when we can encourage them to just build a little bigger building on their existing property? Probably doesn't hurt the aesthetics of the neighborhood at all, and it also increases our tax base if they get a little bigger building. Plus, they may be able to store a little stuff undercover instead of outside. So my recommendation, I split it a little finer, I went from one acre down, cause that's basically anything under one acre is non-conforming. And I said twenty-eight hundred square feet. And if you, and I also actually, cause I think this was mentioned, if you could come up with a picture of what that looks like, well, guess what I did?
Shock.
Shocking. If I can get it out here. Excuse me. There's a point seven acre parcel, you can just pass it around and outline it red. I think it's assuming there's an existing twelve hundred foot squared garage on it already, which I can't tell.
Got a picture of my house?
Yours was too hard to do, otherwise I would have did it.
Yeah, this is a little backyard right there.
Yeah, and I said, you know, come on that, add additional space on it. So I did it for, here's one for one point three acres, you can just pass them along. And it assumes what I've got. There's one for one point eight acres. There's one for two point two.
I'm just afraid I'm gonna find my own house in there.
No, it's, it's close, they're in your neighborhood. There's one for two point nine. There's one for three point one, one point three, three point seven, and one for just under five. I basically took these, uh, Kent County access maps and I said, tells you the acres you got there. The only thing I couldn't tell is the size of the garage, so I said, all right, I'll just assume they're all twelve hundred square foot. And what's left, this is what I proposed you could have for size of a building. And it, and it is bigger than Kevin's, but Kevin's just going by whatever somebody wants him to do with something. And I'm projecting, I'm proposing that we make this, give them a little more latitude for a little bigger buildings. And if you look at these drawings, the size of the buildings and the size of the properties, there's plenty of room to put a building of that size on there.
Especially when you look at the five acre.
Right, especially if you look at. And I didn't even, I stopped basically at five acres, four point nine acres. Anything after five acres, I said three percent. And you get up into those acres, I assume a lot of them are ag one anyway, they can be. But I use a percentage, I started with that and then I did some rounding in the half acres. For instance, a one point four acres to one acre, I said you could have thirty-three hundred. Square feet of building. And then from two acres, they're thirty-eight hundred, two and a half, forty-four hundred, forty-eight hundred, and on and on. Up to four point nine acres, I said sixty-four hundred square foot. That's a pretty good sized building, but it's on five acres. That is three percent of the space. I mean, I have no skin in this game, but I keep looking at these people, all the stuff outside, they wish they had a bigger building. Why not give them a bigger building?
Can't afford buildings.
That's, I, I can't help that either.
But it gives them the option.
It gives them an option, and these, these are just random ones that I went through and picked out and said, okay, I can do some measuring myself. I guess. It's a straight line off that thing.
They stick a food farming, because we're not building the building and one side's fifty-nine point eight, the other side's sixty point five.
Well, I know.
If they do, then fire them, don't hire them for the next job.
No, it's, it's farm buildings, that's the way we built it, they're close.
One question for you quick.
Yes, sir.
Does that, is that just accessory building?
Just accessory building.
So you don't have to subtract the square footage of the attached garage?
Yes, that's included there, yes. Accessory buildings, when we revise this, is part of the garage, correct?
You have to include the garage.
You have to include the garage.
Then I think that's smaller than the seven percent that he had on the smaller.
Uh, I don't think so.
If they have that right around three thousand square feet, and you're saying it's smaller than that now, at the point seven acre.
Point seven acres, seven percent is twenty-one hundred.
At one acre, it's probably twenty-eight hundred square feet, which is six point four percent.
Yeah, but I moved one acres up to thirty-three hundred. Point seven acres would be twenty-eight hundred. So if you got a six hundred foot squared garage, I don't, you don't even know, you'd have twenty-two hundred square foot left. I mean, that's a, you can make them bigger if you want.
I like your numbers and I, I like the idea of giving them a little bit more, rather than them having them come back and asking to adjust.
Right. I know, I get it.
You know, so.
And like I said, this examples I pulled, I just pulled access Kent.
Mm-hmm.
Looked at horrible numbers and said, okay, here's a lot that looks like that size, and I took the acres right off there. And used their drawings, stick drawings, figured out the measurements and went from there, so my input, thank you.
Thanks, Phil, for your research.
On both, all of them, so.
Well.
So that one.
One goes from three thousand to thirty-three.
I think it's still too small.
One goes to thirty-eight.
What, right?
From thirty-two five.
A whole turn.
Yeah, I mean, I, let's make sure all look the same thing, this is.
Yeah, sure, we're getting going.
This is what, this is what we tentatively are proposing. No, 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 page five oh seven.
Which one?
Page five oh seven.
Five oh seven.
Boy, that's, that's, okay, I got some.
I like you to.
Three, four acres would go up in center. We have some options that we need.
I don't know yet.
I mean, that's not to say everybody's gonna want to, we need, you know, just pretty big buildings.
This is, this increase, I mean, this is the current, right, so current is twenty-five point. For a half acre to one acre. Okay, this is our current. All right. So what we're saying, like the. Increases everything currently on this, you know. But then if you look at the one photograph or the one screenshot, there's still a ton of room left. Right, so I really think just even that is small. Yeah, if you visually look at.
It's helpful to have visual. It is helpful to have a visual, I see it, yeah.
I mean, I think one of, one of the concerns that I see that comes up is, okay, does that leave you enough room for your secondary septic system? Something helps you, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's where, I mean, for me, that would be a bad for the owner. Well, I'm, it's, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but, but, I mean, the county's gonna decide that, right? You gotta have that laid out to get your building permit.
Right, you've got a designated, you've got a designated area, you know.
Yeah.
To get your building permit.
So.
After the fact, though, I mean, if.
Yeah.
Well, an existing one, no.
Yeah, because to Dale's point, there would be.
That would be something to say too, if somebody comes in with the zoning permit, I, we don't regulate septics. So I just look at setbacks, so if somebody's not doing their due diligence and builds their whole barn on top of your septic system.
Yeah, that's.
They're on their backup.
That's gonna be their problem, you know, I mean, you'd think that they would look for their septic drain field, yeah.
On, on the insert.
So.
But you're right, anything new, you would have to designate.
Yeah.
When you get your initial, initial permit, uh, set aside an area, so. But what I hear you saying down here is, you think we ought to increase it a little bit then?
That's my feeling. That's my, especially when you start looking at the five acre parcel, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the fi- the five acre parcel, there's, there's so much more allowable space. I think we're really limiting it there, um. And truly, if you look at the, the screenshots, they're all have additional space, I think, and.
Right.
There, you know, the only thing that comes to mind for me is that additional septic drainage field requirement that you're supposed to have.
Right.
And, yeah, we can say, okay, it doesn't matter, that's the homeowner's problem, but is that really the right approach, right?
Well, any builder, I would assume, with a grain of salt of what they're worth, are gonna say, where's your septic?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, but we're not gonna say, go off and say, where's your reserve?
Oh.
Right.
Okay.
Give me your county permit from when you built the place, so I know your reserve is.
Okay.
They're gonna want the job, so, cause you're going on the reserve, let's build it.
Yeah. I don't know, can we, can you designate that without, is that something you can?
No, it's, it's.
Add, I wouldn't think you could, because that's, that's county health department. That's not, doesn't fall underneath our jurisdiction.
Something we may be able to require the zoning permit. And. We could.
I guess, I guess somewhere on the, on the, we should at least advise them.
Yeah.
That maybe you want to check with the health department as far as maintaining a reserve area.
Mm-hmm.
And we do try to provide that, you know, and there's only so much that, you know, we have our jurisdictional lane. I think a really good example is with lots, so when somebody comes in and just works lots, and myself and the assessor work with them. In this one, sometimes we'll always advise, the percentage we have before is like, you know, where do we shoot this? Maybe I have a sort of, may want to work with the county health department and see if it's the proper first, because. I've seen it more than two times for somebody who does the lot split, gets all the service, splits it and they can't get the three. So they just spend thousands of dollars, so we do try to provide something.
Right.
But at the same time.
Just a heads up, you know, to, to kind of.
Yeah.
They can't come back, well, you guys, you know, they tell us about this.
Yeah.
And at the same time, I can advise everything, there's, you can only be aware of certain zoning warrants, there's so many others.
No.
Trying to achieve something better.
Do our building permits point out, do they want to have checked with this, this, you know? Not part of the permit, but it's again, to hit them.
I'm not sure really, but the drain field.
Right.
That's kind of a, I don't think that would be, you still have that problem, I mean, when you leave the house.
You're not gonna live, you're not gonna live before a box, a box.
That's pretty much all I'm, I'm pretty sure they would want to give the, the driveway.
No, I mean, what's the magic number?
We, we want to come up with a, with the square footage or do we want to have Kevin look at it, maybe apply some different percentages? See where the numbers fall.
Yeah, one, one thing I would like to comment just before we go move to that, it just, I don't know about limiting the square footage, where you run into the drain field problems. I think that you could have that problem no matter what.
Right, yeah.
So I don't think, although it's a factor to consider in doing it, I don't know that I'd wanna. Err on the side of like, well, we're gonna limit the amount of chances that you might screw it up and put it on the drain field, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I'd rather I give them the flexibility to, to give them more, to Dale's point. In general, I'm kind of leaning that way, you know, but to your question, I don't know, I'm kind of six one half dozen the other right now. What do you think, Terry?
I mean, do we want to bump it up five percent, ten percent, I mean, up in additional?
If the commission likes, we could, I could take, uh, Trusty Goodfellow's numbers.
Okay.
Make it, so bring that, put that chart together, and then I think one of the other recommendations is, um, instead of two percent lot coverage, three percent. So you just update that chart to reflect some of those comments and then bring them back to the planning commission at your next meeting for further review.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good. Now, are you thinking you'll stay with the similar format that what you'd proposed to where under the, uh. What did you do, you went, anything under four acres, you went to a square footage number versus a percentage?
I think what he's saying, he's gonna take the perc, take the increases and figure out with the percentage and then come up with the square footage.
And I think this was put together because they were being penalized under the new one, they were gonna be less than what we.
When you go to percentage value, it kind of gets skewed, right?
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a little messy. Okay. Picture soaked a lot, I mean.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that was great.
I would keep it to the half acres because there's a lot of difference between one point one and one point nine acres.
Okay. The next agenda item, the master plan review. We're early on with that, Kevin.
So it was the compiled master plan with broadband planning commission at the last meeting, um. So it was the compiled master plan with broadband planning commission at the last meeting, um. Then just getting the, once you know you've had a little more time to review, if there's any concerns or changes you'd like to make, we can make them.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, um, the next step in the master plan adoption process would be to send the compiled master plan to legal panel for review.
I think, I think we're ready for that.
I read through it, I I didn't see anything that jumped out to me, um.
Uh, I, I'm ready for that.
I, I thought it was very well put back together and I, I would recommend that we pass it on to the board for a look over.
As we.
Well, this would be going to the attorney first.
Yeah, so we bring it back to the legal.
Yeah. Yes.
Um, so it's kind of, if the plan is straightforward, we'll send it to legal, um. We'll see, they've got the space and complete their review in two months, so we bring it back once legal review is complete, and then, once we have legal's comments. Uh, what Fresh Coast will do is we'll attempt to address some of those legal comments, so you'll see. The next time you would see the master plan, you'd see, here's legal's comments, here's how we attempted to address them, and then you get the planning commission's feedback on how to proceed.
Everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was.
I am.
What'd you get it on?
Very well.
Okay.
Pre-proposed motions, there's three proposed motions in this motion, or is it? It's normal.
Yeah. So I propose we send the master plan on to legal council for review.
Second.
Right, the motion property's supported, any other comments? You wanna roll call on this one?
Yeah.
Okay, this, okay, all those in favor say, if I'm not saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side? Okay. Get it over to Cliff then, Cliff still, yeah.
It's one.
Yeah, I'm sure it will be Cliff or one of his associates, because we just work with Booms like it in another community, so I don't want their associates, so.
Right. Is there anything else that need to be brought for us?
Glad you had my nap. Uh, Rob Stephens, forty-three, forty-four, thirteen mile. You know, I think I brought this up before quite a while back, and it's, something that's been on my mind and is, is, you know, I'm still on the board and, and, uh, is. Uh, private roads and ag one, uh, they're almost impossible to get. And I think to just make it simple, simple, Alpine doesn't allow any private roads and ag one, and I'd like to see us just do that, just to make it. So it's, it's not so maybe confusing. As one, at least open it up for discussion, you know, and then the other thing is our sliding scale and. I know, um, I know we're more liberal than Alpine, um. And I think of when, when we set up our zoning the way it is, you can about guarantee at some point, that's how our township, that property's gonna look. With that, with the splits, non-ag splits, that many. We allow quite a few, and I've always thought if you could eliminate just one off right up, right up the sliding scale. But that might help us a little bit down the road. Um, you know, Alpine did a build out analysis years ago, and they found out what would population be if everybody took their splits? And did everything they could down there, and they, their population would have been bigger than the size of East Kenwood. And, you know, if we do a build out analysis, I'm kinda curious what that would be, but it certainly wouldn't look very aesthetically pleasing in my mind. So for the long term, I see agricultural view, I was wondering if there'd be any open to discussion on that, so, that's it.
Okay. Sort of make it see the value in at least discussing it, uh.
Put it on our agenda?
Put it on our agenda and maybe make that our, our next.
Yeah, I know there's a, it's kinda, I thought my head was, add them to the work list, gonna know the planning commission has a few items, so I'll make sure that those items are added to the work list.
Make work list, yeah.
And then we can bring the work list to the planning commission at your next meeting, and we, you guys wanna work on that?
I can appreciate what Kevin's saying, you know, and I know how we got to where we're at back then, you know? Alright, anything else?
Just.
Yes, sir.
Um, my name's Mike Badrum, I live at forty-seven twenty-six Churchill. And, um, so I've been coming because I, I have interest in building an accessory building on my property. And I've been kinda doing the research and understanding what the rules are with the existing building that I have. And the direction that we're going is helpful to me, but because of my lot, my buildable area is very small. And I can give you, I've got kind of picture here of what, what my buildable area is based on my lot. And I, I have two and a quarter acres, and because of the way that the, the zoning ordinance reads, the only place I'm allowed to build is right there. In that. Small sliver of property.
And Mike, can you explain just a little bit more, like, because I know where that is, but it's a kind of a unique.
Yeah. I, I live in what used to be Lisbon. On Churchill Road, that short gravel dead end road, and I have two and a quarter acres of property, but my property is between two roads.
So your problem is setbacks.
Right, because you've got two roads to setback from.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I may, so yeah, that's the way the zoning ordinance is written right now, is, because it's on two roads, you said two front yards, and you can't have an accessory building closer to the road. And that's three hundred feet back, and in either case, it's not three hundred back the road, so it really puts it in a small buildable area. So the only path forward that he would have to building outside of that limited space would be seek a variance, which would add a significant cost to the project.
Seeking the variance as a, as the significant cost?
Can I say again?
Seeking a variance.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Asking for a variance, I don't know.
Yeah.
What is a variant, asking for a variant?
You would be looking for a dimensional variance in that case, so showing practical difficulty. So I have spoken with, with Mike just earlier this, last week, um, haven't done a full review, but, I mean, this is definitely, I think, the reason why variances exist.
I'm sorry.
I find the brings sometimes, I have to do the planning commission's management.
Interesting. Would the changes we're making now help them?
Yeah.
Yes, they would in the fact that, so if you see just to the east of my house, I have a small building.
Okay.
It's three hundred and seventy-eight square foot.
Okay.
It's by what we call, the township recognizes as a building, it's a building, but it's literally just a roof with poles. I use it to store my firewood under, and my wood stove is low underneath it, so it's really, it, other than wood storage, that's the only purpose of that building. So the changes that, that, that are being proposed to the square footages are beneficial to me, because the way that it currently reads, I would have to get rid of that building. To build a, another building on my property.
So that's considered right now.
My, it's a shed or an accessory.
Shed.
No.
It's considered an accessory building, because it's over two hundred square foot.
Space, because it needs to have three hundred foot setback from, from for a walk.
Okay.
And I know what you, there was some, talk about non-conforming lots, and what I understand, I, I'm a, I'm a non-conforming lot. But I just, I have such a large piece of property, but I'm hemmed into a twenty-two foot, you know, I, I, I have to see exactly, but it might be forty feet. Sliver all the way across my property that I'm able to build, build a building on.
And this, and you have, I'm sorry, are these trees, bro, trees? You have an orchard, is your, okay.
So what's considered the front yard on, on your property?
Churchill. I mean, that's where my driveway goes to, that's which way my house faces.
That's how he interprets it.
And his address is on Churchill.
And I'm addressed to Churchill.
So it's, but, so it's non-conforming, because it doesn't meet the setback, right?
It's under acre.
No, I'm two and a quarter.
No, he's two and a quarter acres.
You're saying he's got two front yards?
Yeah.
Because he's at, because the.
Right, my, I guess my question is, is it setback or you from Churchill Road?
Property butts up.
Right away, twenty-five feet to my front door, if that.
So when it was originally built, twelve mile was, even though your address and everything is Churchill.
Mm-hmm.
From a building standpoint, it must have been considered as a setback from twelve mile?
I mean, this.
That's very good.
I mean, I'm just asking questions, because it's.
Yeah.
The house was built nineteen eighty.
Nineteen eighty?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, one thing, like, I heard that two front yards, and you, you've said this to me before, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Kevin, what, uh, what constitutes two front yards?
So when determining what is the front yard, we're gonna go to the zoning ordinance, typically that requires a review of the definitions. So you have definitions for lot line front, lot line rear, lot line side. Typically, the way that those definitions are written is, first the front, front lot lines established, and the rear lot line is the one parallel and opposite. And then any line on our front or rear is a stop. So that's where we end up, uh, Mike's property is that, it's got two roads, so it's got two front lot lines for the zoning ordinance, and you have two front yards. The yard is based on the lot, you think lot line, nearest wall, nearest portion of the accessory or the, the dwelling.
So I have a two hundred and twenty square foot front yard.
Front yard.
That's an or- that's an orchard.
If he has two front yards, he has two rear yards.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Sorry.
You have something to say, we'll recognize it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Large.
This is definitely something that we.
And, and my, my thought process is, is we, you guys were talking about how with an, attached garage, you could go out fifteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
In front, okay? Well, I guess if it was the same for an unattached.
Mm-hmm.
Cause my thing is, I, I'm not asking for a lot.
No, no.
I want maybe, and my, my problem is, is if you look very closely at that picture, I've already put in a driveway, pretty much to the woodshed, just almost right in front of where that, where the driveway is across the street, where the truck is.
Hmm.
And the reason I had to put the driveway there is because there's a power pole, and then there's power lines that go across at an angle.
Oh.
And there's a ditch.
Mm-hmm.
So it limits to me to where I could put my driveway, so if I, if I build my building within that space, I'm gonna have to basically go like this to get into my building. It's gonna be virtually impossible for me to get a vehicle in and out of the vehicle, unless I put the doors on the backside, then I would have to drive all the way around. And bring in more sand, it, it just makes it a lot more.
What, uh, you, you mentioned the, the cost, what, what would be, what kind of cost would you incur going through a variance, and is a variance even obtainable?
For this one, and that's when I, when I talked to Mike, it's, this may, this seems like a good opportunity for a variance, I wanna set him down that path.
Right.
And I said, hey, look at that more if you want before you apply. Um, so some of the, some of the things that we also talked about is, so right now in your zoning ordinance, you don't address through lots. So where you have a road on both sides, you've got, for corner lots, you still have, you have two front yards, but then it's written that one is a rear yard and one's a side yard for, if not. That could be something that the planning commission looks at, is, do you wanna create another definition for through lots, so in this case. For an example, in one of my communities, on a through lot, you have one front yard, as, you know, based on where the driveway is at, and then the other one's considered a rear. So it would do our side lots, so that would be, if the planning commission wanted to proceed, you could look at amending that definition or adding a definition to address these types of concerns in the future.
I think that would be.
And that's, and that's kind of, you know, if I had a forty acre parcel, that's got furnitures on two roads, do I have two front yards?
Right.
But it, it, to his point, if we can do it, like he said, your driveway is on church.
Yes, yeah, no, yeah. Churchill.
Churchill, and, and.
My house orientates to Churchill.
And that makes more sense.
And, and my, my, my thing is, is that if, if we're opening up the conversation about accessory buildings.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I think that this issue.
Yeah.
Sure.
Could, could fall into that.
Yeah, and this is an excellent example.
Yeah.
And we appreciate you coming tonight, because I think this is definitely something that will help us.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and I thought that, you know, and I appreciate Bill bringing the, the pictures up to put into, you know. Cause I have plenty of room, I mean, I wanna build a thirty-two by four meter hole barn, it's not like I'm trying to build a monstrosity of building.
I would like to see is. Change the wording so that, you know, like you said, if the driveway and his address is on Churchill. Then that would make it so that just.
My setback, my setback from my north building wall to, to twelve mile is approximately two hundred and twenty square foot.
Definitely.
Okay.
Or two hundred and twenty feet, so I'm twenty-five feet off the right away of Churchill, two hundred feet away from the other one.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
Benji, could Benji, you can, yeah, so you.
Yes.
Um.
That's an abandoned right away.
Mike, it's abandoned?
Yes.
Mike, is there any other houses on that, that have this issue, like Churchill, what, cause.
Well, there's, there's a lot next door that has basically just a, a barn on it.
Cause Amy lives right, uh, up there on, uh, Kenawa.
She's, she's on, she's on Kenawa, yep.
Then, who, they, they down.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, there's two houses, there's one that's basically.
I just wondered if there is another situation because of that.
No, because of the way that, the way, the other, way the other lots are, are lined up on my road. There's, there's, there's split between twelve mile and, and Churchill. Mine is the only lot, with the exception, if you look, this, this lot right here, you can just kind of catch the corner of it with that barn, that goes all the way through, but that's a very chin strip. That goes all the way to twelve mile.
Cause to your point, I was thinking about like Kevin alluded to, but through lots, and if there was, I don't pretend to know if there's other ones in Sparta Township where we'd have a potential challenge. With the same thing, I don't know, and then it, uh, you know, to deal with one thing, if there's something we can deal with more potential issues down the road.
Yeah.
With the through lot issue than kind of to Kevin's point, uh.
The legal description of my lot is, I think, like five different lots, because the, this used to be in the village of Lisbon.
Yeah.
That's why there's that abandoned right away there, and if you, if you were to zoom out even farther, you would see there's actually another one that comes back to twelve mile as well.
Yeah.
There were, there were two roads that went from Churchill to twelve mile.
Well, if it's an abandoned one, is there any possibility of you purchasing that?
The problem is, is that who's gonna get to purchase it?
Oh, yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Me or Ken Hubert?
Yeah.
Ah.
Okay. Yeah.
No, if I own, and, and I had conversations with the county, I said, what if I own both sides, they said, yes, we would, we would potentially give it to you with the township's blessing. But I, I don't need more land, I have two and a quarter acres, I have plenty of property, I just.
Right.
Okay.
Have a, I'm really boxed in on how I, what I can do with an accessory building and if the conversation's open about changing how, how this works, I think this is a good time.
But does it, how does the county abandon them, do they split it between the adjoining property owners?
Yeah.
I have no idea. I have no idea, it's been there ever since, I, I've lived there since two thousand nine.
I've got a place up in Baldwin, I got that situation, and I had under the impression that.
It's split.
If we, if we, if they split it, then the two adjoining property owners have the opportunity of purchasing half of it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, which would make sense, because there's, I mean, there's a, you could, there's a drive.
Right.
And you can pull off a twelve mile and off a Churchill, I mean, the culverts and everything are still there, but, yeah, they, it was, it used to be called First Street. Was the name of it, I actually have some old drawings, and there was a church just to the east of me, and that's why there was, from what I understand, there was two churches on that road.
Hmm.
That's why it's called Churchill. So, but, no, I appreciate your time and.
Yeah, give us a little bit of time to look into it, hopefully we can.
Something, I think we.
Yeah, I mean, if, if that's something that we can work into, if you're gonna be making some changes, cause I just.
Yeah. Yeah.
And my conversations with Kevin, the minimum cost of a variance is twenty-one hundred dollars, and that's taking a chance, and, and, that, that's a month's pay to a lot of hardworking people.
Yeah.
But that's an exorbitant amount of money for something that, I'm, I'm not asking for a lot.
No.
I'm asking for twenty feet, to be able to set my, my barn back a little bit, so that it's more useful to me. And from what I gather, that's the, that's what we're trying to do with the accessory building, is to make it more friendly for the residents of the township to be able to use their property how they like to, so. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that. Okay.
Richard Evers, seventeen oh five, ten mile road, Sparta, Michigan. Okay, I'm more logical than I am about feelings, beliefs and everything else, but by Kevin's definite, if his definition's right, because I don't even know if it's correct. This property owner could have two backyards just as much as he has front yards. Because if he has a backyard, the opposite, the front yard, then the opposite one's the backyard, so you can interpret it either way. He has two backyards or two front yards, according to what Kevin interpretation was, I'm not saying it's, that he's inter- that, I don't know what it says. And I'm just saying, that's kind of, so maybe you can build a, as much as he says he can't on one side, I think. He might be able to build it in his backyard, which he has two backyards just as much as he has front yards, and I don't think that's, I think this, I think this is unreasonable is what I'm saying.
I think we recognize that, and we're gonna try.
And he influenced you guys to think one way and him to think one way.
No, but we're gonna try to do, we're gonna try to deal with it.
He shouldn't have to, though. He shouldn't have to, though.
Okay, this is a comment time, we don't respond back.
That's what I'm saying, that, that's, that's right, he's responded back, not me, I'm making the comment.
Okay.
So I'm sneaking that comment.
That's what I'm saying.
He's the one not being the comments, right? Am I correct or incorrect?
Thank you for your comment.
But am I correct or incorrect?
Thank you for your comments.
Am I correct or incorrect? I made the comment, he's the one that came at me. Am I correct or incorrect?
I think that's enough.
Thank you.
I don't care what you think.
Okay.
I care what the law says, Mister Evers, please calm down.
No, it, it isn't about calming down, it's about doing the right thing. Just.
We've heard you.
I made a comment, you came back at me, she won't reply, everybody, I made the comment, stop her at there.
Please, please calm down, is all I said, that's all I said.
There, tell him to keep his mouth shut, we will. So.
I make a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion properly scored, it all in favor?
Aye.